Good evening. Today is Wednesday, November 5th, 2025. We are, time is 6:30 PM. We are in the Eldon F. Marrero Board of Selectmen Meeting Room on the second floor of Town Hall. Before I ask everybody who can stand to stand for the pledge, please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station. Join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. First on the agenda is a vote to ratify Gretchen Conway's employment as head secretary/assistant tax collector. So Scott, I don't know if you want to, Scott or Linda, want to do an introduction? Or just Gretchen, want to just say hi and maybe a little bit about 20-minute dissertation about yourself?
Sure, no problem. I'd rather I stand or sit.
No, we're going to be as informal.
Well, as you know, my name is Gretchen Conway. So I was born and raised in Duxbury. I went, graduated from Bridgewater State University. I have a bachelor's in science. My major was math and my minors were accounting, finance, and natural science. So it was a fun one. So I do love numbers. I'm an average cribbage player. I've talked to David about that a little bit, so I...
Yeah, we're going to start a league.
I'm going to be coaching football.
I'll be some.
I have a financial background. I was in the banking industry for a decade or so. And then worked in the administrative field for several years. So I'm just excited to bring my skills here and my background. And my family and I, we're close by. We're in Norton, so we're 20 minutes away. We're looking to relocate here. And I'm just excited to be a part of the wonderful community, both at work and at home, very soon.
So.
Exactly, right? She does numbers. She likes the town. I like it.
So.
No, well, we're excited to have you.
I'll be here, thank you.
So, we're forward to it. I have Marcy, anything?
No, that's wonderful. That all sounds great. We are happy to have you.
Sorry it wasn't 20 minutes, but...
No, no, no. We were joking, but you knocked that out the park nicely done.
Yeah, very well.
I have nothing. I'm just excited, like, oof, it was awesome.
Next week.
Sounds wonderful. Yeah, she said, "Give me some time."
All right, so hearing nothing, I'll make a motion to ratify Gretchen Conway's employment as head secretary/assistant tax collector.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Welcome.
Welcome. Happy to have you.
Yes.
Glad to be here, thank you.
All right. Super, you are, that was you. You can stay if you want, but most people leave.
It's really interesting, though.
Have a good night. You, too.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 24th, 2025. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of October 15th, 2025, for review.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Super. Next on the agenda, communications from reports, boards, commissions, and town officials. We have a vote to appoint Kathleen Forster to the Open Space and Recreation Committee.
So Kathleen is not here, but she has a recommendation from the Open Space and Recreational Committee. They're looking forward to having her come on, as she has been already attending their meetings for close to a year, just to be involved. And again, just so you're aware, she is the mom of Amy, who helps us get lots of grants in the planning department.
Amy Grant.
That would be my question. That was going to be my question. I'm like, hmm, but that's wonderful, yeah. And it says that she worked on the Riverwalk Planning Committee as well, so she's pretty involved.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Kathleen Forster to Open Space Recreation Committee.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Kathleen. Correspondence from the public to determine course of action. We have none, public comment, period. We have one.
None.
All right. By the way, when you pull in your driveway, that little beep beep today, that was me.
You got my attention. I looked at the calendar, that's why I did that.
Well, it worked. So we'll move over to the town administrators.
Yeah, so thank you. So first is, I just wanted to give you an update as to recent DESI changes, which is Department of Education and Secretary of Education for the state of Massachusetts, pertaining to vocational schools. I met with the superintendent in a meeting at Southeastern Regional a couple of weeks ago. This was their PowerPoint. I condensed it because it didn't have to be that long. But anyway, so these are some regulatory changes that, in my opinion, are not very favorable, but I think that the board needs to be aware of. They let us know, which is pretty consistent year over year, is what the numbers are, but they really only receive in or are able to take in about one-third of all the applications. So they're a highly sought-after educational facility. Beginning with the class of 2030, then it is now going to become a full-out lottery. So effective right now is that while it is at some level a lottery system, it's my understanding is that there's also predetermined qualifications. They have to be a pretty good student. They have to show up. They have to have good grades. They have to, you know, there's certain criteria that we would all want, right? As seventh and eighth graders. And then from there, based on a percentage for each municipality, because there's nine of us that are participatory communities, then they then, for lack of a better term, blindly draw out from that bucket. So while there's 1,285, there's about 400 or so that get it. And West Bridgewater is historically around 60 to 70 students. And now, beginning in 2030, it will be a full-out lottery.
And just to be clear, it's not 2030, it's next year.
But graduating class.
Graduating class of 2030. That was the math.
So assume it's not...
It starts 2026.
That is correct.
Yeah, it starts next, next year.
Right, so if we back up just one slide, so take that 1,280. So in theory, there'll be almost no limitations. There's a couple, which we'll define in a minute. But there'll be almost no requirements. 1,280 go in, and you just blindly draw. Yes?
So you said that's per DESI? That's not per Southeastern?
1,000% of state regulations.
This is asinine, to put it mildly.
It is, yeah. My son goes, and he told me about that. He goes to Southeastern. And he told me that was coming. And I thought that was just a Southeastern thing. So that's a whole vocational school thing, like just state-wide.
Across the entire state.
That's why.
And you've got to understand, these, our local school is obviously a state mandate, right? It's a local school. These are choice schools. So somebody makes a choice to want to go. And depending on those qualifications, then they are chosen to be brought in because, as we saw, it's highly competitive. This is going to get rid or water down most of that level of competitiveness. So based on the new system, when you look at this lottery, is that every single person that wants to apply will now get one entry. That is not the current system, as I understand it. People who do not have good grades or consistently not in school, chronic absenteeism, all those, those negate their application. And quite frankly, if you're in the school, you know, that's a really good school system. Those are really good kids. So anyway, so with that said, this is going to get rid of all of it. So now, everybody that just wants to throw their hat in, they may not even be serious. They just want to throw their hat in the ring, they are now going to get one entry. Then, the next criteria is unexcused absence. I find this to be kind of a joke, to be honest with you. And this was a specific area of concern of mine with the superintendent. But anybody, according to DESI, that is less than 27 unexcused absences over two years will get an additional entry. That's 13 per year.
That's correct.
And those are unexcused. So if you go on vacation and you provide a note to the school and say, "I'm going to work for a week", that's an excused absence. These are unexcused. This is literally when they don't show up and nobody knows why they didn't show up. That's not good.
No, you can decide not to go to school three days a month for no reason whatsoever and still be considered.
Get an extra entry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if you write the expression of interest, and then, so that means if you get all three of these, you get three additional entries, and that'll be a blind draw. So what does that actually mean? So like you said, the first draw will be next year. What does that really mean for us? Like, there's a couple more slides, but think about that. If we're right now, we're around 65, I think we're 65 students this year. What if next year they pull out 300 from West Bridgewater because everybody applied? Your current budget on 1 million could be 4.5 million. I mean, where do you come up with that money? There's no way to budget for it. There's no way to know that it's coming. And I'm going to assume that our local school is not going to lower their budget by $3.5 million to make up for the difference. So I don't really understand how this is entirely workable, but unfortunately, this is the new regulation, and so I'm making you aware of it. They just say in here, again, caveats, you know, they're legitimately random, and you don't know exactly what the effective that is going to be. You see what the bullet points are. In addition to that, which is a positive, is that next year they're also going to start a STEM program. So that's fantastic. But I'm assuming, and why they're bringing this up, is because the assumption is is that there may be even more people that apply.
Yeah.
Because they're going to say, "Hey, this is a new program that I would like to try", but that's only going to increase the amount of entries, and again, potentially have an impact on your budget as well. Or it could go the other way. Right now, we're guaranteed a percent, right? Based on whatever the formula is. What if they pull zero from West Bridgewater?
That was going to be my...
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, that's sad.
That's what I wrote down as well.
I guess bigger picture is, you know, you've got a kid. He's in middle school. Studies, work hard, goes to school, gets good grades. He had a good shot at getting this, right? And this is what he wants, is, you know, wants to be a plumber, wants to be electrician, whatever the trade is, like, wants that role. Now, he's competing against, respectfully, a meathead who only, you know, can miss 27 days of school. Want to go here just because he's tired of his teachers picking on him for not going to school. And he can get in, and the net result is you get two or three of those in a class, and it drags the whole class down, drags the whole education backwards. I was fortunate, like, when I started as a selectman at Southeastern, was going through their accreditation. I got to get over there several times. I mean, all good students, all working hard, all doing stuff. Their culinary program, everything in there is just outstanding. And it's going to take the school that has a lead in what it does and drag it backwards. It's, as I said in the beginning, asinine.
It is. It's ridiculous. Both of my children were admitted to, my older son came back to WB for his sophomore year, but they were both admitted as freshmen, and they knew that there were certain criteria they had to meet. They had to have great behavior. They had to have good grades. They had to have good attendance. So they strive to meet that criteria to be able to get into the school. There was an interview, there, I mean, it's a process to get in, and they earned it. And now there are going to be people earning it and not getting in, while people who are not earning it are getting in. And that is, that's just sad. It's sad for everybody that, you know, wants to go and isn't going to get the opportunity.
Yeah, because to your analogy earlier, Jeff, that 27 or less, or if somebody does 27, they get two entries. The person with 50 absences still gets an entry and could still get picked.
And still do the letter of interest and get two entries.
Potentially. So it's, I think, to Marcy's point, you know, you want students and children that are attempting to get in and fulfill that mission because it's only going to make you better in life when you have to compete in all those things. So, yeah, this is really unfortunate. So there's some history behind this. Apparently, some people didn't like, thought they didn't think that this was entirely fair to people that were not excelling in school. I would take the opposite side on that argument all day long. And so they lobbied the legislature. The House actually told DESI, they passed it, they imposed their budget, they told DESI that they would not allow this regulation to become the law, and that it would have to be studied in committee, which was good. That's what we would want. The same people that were lobbying somehow got to the Senate, and the Senate actually passed it to make it law. And then there was reconciliation between the Senate and the House, which happens every single year, where they basically barter. And it flushed out that this now became an allowable regulation. It is not a statutory requirement, but it just allowed DESI that flexibility to do it. So in response to receiving this, I reached out to Senator Driscoll with Jeff, and we're going to meet with him next week. And we're going to have a conversation with him to see as to what, if there's anything that we can do and see if the Senate's willing to retake this up or do something else. Because not speaking to him in the past, it's my understanding that others have, but not speaking to him directly in the past, he has to understand the real impact this is going to have. And again, the number one priority is always the kids, right? So the kids really, really try hard. That certainly has to be part of the messaging. But as you see in the bottom bullet point, and this is why it's in bold, there is no way we can budget for this. If 200 kids apply from West Bridgewater, in the luck of the draw, if all 200 are chosen, you are literally going to go up millions of dollars with about two months' worth of notice. There's no way to budget for that.
Or the other way, where we get zero and now...
Correct. So from a budget standpoint, it's helpful.
Yeah.
But it would be unfair because that means that...
Well, it's just as unstable the next time, right? You get zero, you cut a million and a half out of the budget, whatever the number. And now, all of a sudden, the next year, you get 30.
Yeah, but it also does a little bit of alleviation at the school on crowdness.
Yeah, right. Well, we pay for that. We offset some of that with school choice at the high school. Yeah, I mean, now you can't tell what you need for school choice. You can't tell, it just, it gets tricky.
But at the end, where we are right now, taking into account everything that you're saying, there's a really good balance. We could figure out the budget, and it's workable. The school, you know, they have the ability to have school choice kids, but also to see some attrition where they go into Southeastern Regional. Children that want to attain and be able to work really hard to get to that level, have that ability to do it, and feel proud when they actually get to there. We've taken all of that and flipped it on its head. So with that said, we'll meet with the Senate, we'll see what happens, and we can always report back to the board.
Is this only a Massachusetts thing?
Yes.
What else would it be?
It's funny, we were just talking about this today at work. Because a couple guys that I work with, their kids are trying to get into Bluebills and obviously going through the same...
Yeah, it's no different there than any of the votes.
I mean, the point is, if you have 1,285 kids vying for 400 spots, that school is doing something right. And why are we going to change that? I understand that as a parent of a child that maybe is not selected, frustrating, but they're doing something right. And now, just by changing it to a random lottery, that's not going to fix that problem. Now it's just pure dumb luck that Janine has drawn.
Yeah.
I mean, they just started a diesel shop again over there last two years, two years ago now, maybe? Maybe three? And the new STEM shop, and then, it's just crazy, really is. I mean, my daughter's going, she's got an interview with the Conventures Union on the 22nd. And she went to Southeastern for the conventry.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's a great school.
Oh, it's a fantastic school.
But it just stinks that they're doing this to the kids.
Yeah, it's going to get dumbed down a little, unfortunately.
Well, they have great students right now, to your point. They really do. Anytime that I've attended an event at the school, I mean, the school's massive, right? So you don't know where you're going in the school, but they always have groups of kids who have volunteered to show people around. And so a lot of time, when you interact with a teenager, you don't expect them to really, like, converse with you. They're not big talkers. These kids can talk.
Yeah.
And they can talk to adults, and they can have and hold real conversations. And they, I've been so impressed by hearing some of these kids speak and give speeches to. So impressive, and I just feel like that's going to change now.
Next up is, Jeff and I had a conversation in the past about this, so I'll turn over to Jeff. But I've provided you a draft policy on a public comment. We have public comment on the agenda. And the history of this is, is that there was a Supreme Judicial Court ruling based on a selectman meeting in another town that really, in my opinion, just didn't go the way it should have, where residents were being, and one resident in particular was being overly aggressive, was not making threatening statements, but certainly making scandalous and aggressive statements over and over again. And then eventually went to Supreme Judicial Court. So at the end of the day, the Attorney General's Office has issued guidance, so I'll turn over to Jeff as to what...
Yeah, so where this comes from is my free time. I tend to watch all of our meetings, you know, all the town meetings, you know, on cable. Cat's off to the corner. And then from that, your algorithm grows. And now I see Bridgewater's meetings, and I get a bunch of other meetings. Bridgewater does the three-minute rule very well, very effective. They tend to have a lot of people looking at public comment in the beginning of their meetings. And that's not the reason for this. The reason for this is I've also watched a bunch of meetings where the board doesn't have a three-minute rule. And there've been some meetings that have gone on for three nights because people, when you can't shut somebody off, when you can't control the time, people go and go and go and go. And without guidelines and some borders around, you know, public comment period, unfortunately, the same thing could happen here. I mean, I think we're fortunate, we have a lot of good residents, but it doesn't have to be a resident. That's the other part. Anybody can come in here and speak. So this is what, I am not sure, I don't want to have a discussion, obviously, with you guys. It's my thought, but I'm not sure about Section E with the 20-minute limit. I think maybe we can live without that and, you know, adjust for that in the future. If all of a sudden we have something that we've got 30, 40 people in here, and everybody gets three minutes, and now we're three hours into a meeting with public comment, we can readjust, but I don't think that's common or frequent. But I think we should have some guidelines in place to public comment. The thing about it is, I will say, like, speaking, speaking to town council at the last town meeting, once we do this, we're doing it. Like, it has to be consistent, and we have to, we have to stick to it. Three minutes doesn't sound like much, but it's a fair amount of time also for somebody to raise a point. And like I said, I've seen it at other towns that are working. I was looking at a school committee, budget committee agenda yesterday, and they also have a three-minute piece in place. So it's not unheard of in town. We haven't had any issues, but I think it's best to address it. And I don't think we've had somebody come in here to speak and honestly speak longer than three minutes in probably the last two years, so it's just, it's, you know, if you were bowling, you'd call this bumpers, maybe, to put up just to keep the conversation from going into the gutter for a long period of time, I guess. So we're not looking to vote, we're looking for some feedbacks and thought on it. And then I think David has to run a final of what we talked about back through town council. And the Attorney General's Office is pretty particular about how it is and what it is. So, and three's the number. It's not five, it's not six from talking to town council, it's three.
That's what my question was going to be, is, is that what the standard is across three? Because I see 20 on ours or what's on here right now.
20, no, 20 would be collectively. And that's what I'm saying, I think we eliminate that. I don't think we need that to start. I think three minutes, if there's 10 people in here, it's okay, it's 30 minutes' worth of conversation. I don't think we need to go to 10 because also if there's 25 people in here and everybody, with that in place, now somebody's talking for less than a minute.
Yeah.
I think, but I also want the public to know, like, it's not, we're like, we're trying to restrict what the communication is. It's just three minutes, just to get what you have, and then we can do some sort of continuum from that.
Right, and depending on what the person is speaking about, like, if, you know, I think there's a reason for it to be, you know, expectation of the chair to have brought, put that on the agenda, not put it on the agenda. So in a lot of cases, watching other communities, they take that, they take note of it. They might not address it again until the next meeting, when it's on the agenda, to not violate open meeting law as part of that. Now, if it's something that just happened, needs a quick reaction, that's different, and that's okay. But generally, that would be...
I think that's fair. I think three minutes is fair. I mean, I don't mind the 20 minutes, just, and I only say that because I don't think we've ever had an issue with it. Like, I've been to a lot of selectman meetings and prior to being a selectman, I think there was probably only one time that I can remember the public, you know, really wanting to speak and multiple people wanting to speak at that time. So I'm fine with the 20 minutes, but I'm fine getting rid of it also. But the three minutes, I think, is fine as well.
Yeah, my struggle with the 20 minutes, and this was, you know, something that was on paper before we had this discussion, is if 10 people come in here to talk, now it's somewhere at two minutes. You know, I just, I don't mind 10 people coming in if there's a hot issue and people want to speak.
Yeah, no, yeah, see, I could do with or without, so I don't...
Or we can increase it, you know? I don't think that's a set number.
No, but I also think it's important to have some sort of boundaries because a lot of times, a lot of people, if they do show up and come in here and they do have a conversation with us, like, hey, you're coming in here with, armed, with a lot of information, and we're expected to know every little piece of what you've done extensive research on. And I think it gives us the ability to actually give you, give you the same level of respect and give you the same answer with us being able to do research. So it's not like we're trying to cut them off from talking. It's just, hey, this is a new issue, and we want to help address it. I mean, not a lot's happened in a few years, so we're very thankful for, in this town, and a lot of, I think it's because, you know, we have great department heads, we have great, great department heads, we've got great departments, and we have a great town and with great residents.
But again, it doesn't have to be a resident. That's part of it.
Exactly. Yeah, I'm good. We're going over three minutes on this one.
Yeah. If we could correlate to three minutes, it'd be a victory.
Yeah, but how do we monitor that? Do we need like a wall clock?
I had a timer on the iPad. Like, we'll flip a phone around so both people can see, we'll work it out.
We'll manage.
But with that in mind, let's talk about, I guess, Section E. If it sounds like we're okay with three minutes, do we want to hold 20? Do we not want to hold 20? I would want to increase it, maybe?
I'd be in favor of increasing it. My only concern is then 30 people are going to want to say the same thing. They're all harping on the same, and I want to hear what people have to say. But if they're, you know what I mean? If it's 30 people repeating the same thing, I think there should be a limit somewhere, sometime. Otherwise, you could have a line out the door of people coming in to give you the same opinion.
So that's the challenge with this SJC decision because it's a little inconsistent with the current open meeting law. The open meeting law specifies that the chair, at his or her discretion, may allow somebody to be able to speak. That SJC decision basically said, even if you have 30 people all saying the exact same thing, they have a First Amendment right to say it. And that's where the challenge comes in. And so that's why some people had talked about whether it's 20 minutes. Legal counsel is also vetting this because this is also a concern. If you have 40 people show up and you say each one of you has 30 seconds, then you're really not giving them a real opportunity to speak either, except that you're at least not having disparate treatment and you're requiring everybody to stay within those timelines. So if we can, one item of note, I want you to know, you can amend the policy as much as you want and still comply with the spirit of the decision. So if we want to try with no cap, just do the three minutes and no advocate cap, and then we find out at a later date, for whatever reason, it gets abused, although it is stinky for that one meeting, that it's being abused, you could come back and amend your policy. And then you're still legal because now you're just implementing a new policy. So, again, if the thought process is to try to do it without the 20 minutes, and just allow as many people to speak at the three-minute level, and then knowing that you could always put it on a future agenda, because then they could speak longer, because it's an agenda item, I can have conversation with counsel and remove that cap.
Remove it, or we won't put up?
No, I'm fine with removing it and seeing how that goes.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't had any issues, so, you know.
Exactly.
You're right, we might go through one long night, but it will still be shorter than what it would be without the three minutes, so.
Exactly, yeah.
Mike? Mike?
I'm on board.
Okay.
All right, then as well do so. I will, once they have final review from counsel, the goal will be to bring it back at your next meeting, which is Sunday, November 19th. But if for whatever reason that doesn't happen between now and then, then it will be at a subsequent meeting after that.
Okay.
Thank you. I just placed on the agenda a follow-up to the special town meeting from October 20th. First, just to let you know, we have filed everything with the state that we're required to do, so that way we want to make sure that we're in compliance immediately, since we do have outstanding grants that we didn't want to lose, and obviously we're in compliance now that we took the vote. There was one item of note that I know I ended up talking that night more than I actually thought I was going to, and talking to some of the selectmen, and Mike in particular, that I should have stated. Nobody was in favor of this passing, really, we didn't want it. But one item of notice is that we originally had it on the warrant in May, and we didn't move it, because I think that the board showed a lot of leadership on this, when they said, let's not move it until we see what the outcome of litigation is with other municipalities through the summer. And unfortunately, all of those cases went the way we wouldn't want them to go. But you bought the town time, and I probably should have communicated that at that time, and I didn't think to do so.
It's fine, I mean, the people at the town meeting, I mean, the record's there, we all know at the May meeting, you know, we were not in favor of it, because we thought we started other options, and as it turned out, we didn't, so.
So, you know, again, just for anybody who's out there, I want to make sure that they had those facts, make sure, you know, the board, I think, again, we didn't rush, the board didn't rush it, we waited to see how those, all those other cases settled, and unfortunately, in every single case, not a single one, broke the way we had hoped that it would, so. So with that said, I don't know if there's anything else you guys want to discuss on it, but I just placed it on there in case there was any fallout. Thank you. So now it looks like we'll move on to what is potentially our next special town meeting. At this point, we would be targeting January, but before we did that, I placed a calendar in a packet, because I thought it would be helpful, that it's always nice to be able to see it and have the visual. As you know, over the last handful of years, town meeting approved $1.2 million on a feasibility study to create a school building committee to look at what the options are in having a new school in town and be a consolidation project. That committee of which, and Marcy is on representing the board, that has finished its job and is recommending a project to MSBA. We'll get into the numbers in a moment. And that proposal is going to MSBA, and they will be voting on West Bridgewater's proposal on December 12th. Assuming a favorable MSBA vote at that point, the clock starts ticking, that at that point the town has 120 days to then be able to have, secure the financing for that project and report back to MSBA. So 120 days will start from that date, and 120 days then puts us out to April 11th, 2026. So we would then, on December 17th, I would request the Board of Selectmen at that time to open the warrant and call a special town meeting date. We're going to recommend, I think it is, well, let's see, it's January 31st, it was a Saturday, I've spoken to each one of you individually about this, I've also spoken to the school superintendent, and I've also spoken to the chair of the school building committee as well, and it makes sense that in January, instead of doing it at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock on a Monday night, which is traditional for the town, it's cold, it's dark, could be icy and unsafe, is you do it on a Saturday, allow DPW a few hours to get out there in the morning, and it should be easier for everybody to be able to attend. So if we go back to December for one second, so there won't be enough time to do what we usually do, which is on that date you would say, okay, let's name a date, and then at a future meeting, we're going to open and close the warrant. There won't be enough time because of the holidays and you don't meet again, and so with that said, I'm going to be asking you on Wednesday, December 17th, to do three things, is to officially declare a date, hopefully January 31st, as the special town meeting date, and also to open the warrant and close the warrant at the exact same time. Again, that's not traditional, and if the board is in favor of that strategy, then I think that it is right and proper, that in the meantime, our office will communicate out to department heads to say, look, we most likely will have a special town meeting in January, I would like to keep it specific to the school, because I think this is an important vote, but if there's an emergency situation, please let us know, so that way that night you can place it on the warrant. Because if you don't have anything between now and then, you can't place anything else, because that night you're going to be placing the vote for the school on the warrant. So far, does that make sense, or any questions about that?
I do, I have two, I'm sorry, I have two questions. First question is, on the December 12th vote for MSBA, do they tell us, or at that vote, the percentage of the loan that they'll be able to cover of the grant?
They will, they will vote on the percentage, but that percentage is on reimbursable costs. So the reason I say this, because they're going to tell you what the percentage is, but you won't know definitively, it's all estimates, estimates, you won't definitively know as to what that real number is until the end of the project, because you don't know what you're going to run into. But if the spirit of the question is, will we know the percentage that day, the answer is yes.
Now, because of the holidays, and we are in November now, obviously, because of the holiday, can we ask the department heads to maybe basically send us a memo if they, whether they do need something on that board or on that special meeting, or they don't, to send in a memo saying, hey, we acknowledge the fact that this is happening, we don't have any requests, that way we're up to date, you guys agree with that? Just that way we have some kind of verbal confirmation that, or written confirmation that they acknowledge that we're putting it out there.
I mean, there shouldn't be anything, we just had a special town meeting, it should have caught everything that.
Should have, could have.
True, though, no, yeah, confirmed, you don't have anything.
Yeah, it's confirmed.
That's fine.
And we can't, I would ask the Board of Selectmen to set a date and call a special town meeting prior to December 12th, because once you call it, you can't cancel it.
Right.
You have to actually show up to the meeting, and the moderator then has to declare it dissolved, which is silly, so we don't want to go through that. That's why we have to wait till the 17th, we can't do it.
That meeting gets postponed for some reason or something else. Now we've got a town meeting with nothing to vote on.
Exactly. So then in January, we would be looking at having the meeting on December 31st, I'm sorry, January 31st, there would be nothing else to do, except we'll obviously have to, you'll have to sign the warrants, you'll do some perfunctory things that you've done in the past, but.
My interpretation of that, that'd be 10 o'clock in the morning?
Again, that'll be the choice of the board, that they'll decide on the 17th, but yeah, I mean, if you want to do it 10 o'clock, that's fine.
Take the whole day, I'd like.
10 is fine by me.
Okay. In February, assuming that the special town meeting, that is going to require 2/3 of votes, a 67%, because it will be a borrowing article. So assuming that 2/3 of the vote votes yes, then at your immediate next meeting, on Wednesday the 4th, I would then ask the Board of Selectmen then to call a referendum. Just so you're aware, state law requires that a referendum of 50% or greater is what would have to be called and approved, because it's a two-step process, and only the Board of Selectmen can call a referendum. Special town meeting, residents can petition, they can get 200 signatures, they, but when it comes to a referendum, it is a requirement of a vote of you. So in theory, and I'm not advocating this, but I want to make sure you're fully aware of the facts, is that at that special town meeting, if it passed 100 to 0, you could still vote no, and the referendum never occurs. You're not under any requirement, town meeting can't force you to do it, it's an exclusive right of the board, but I assume that if it got 2/3, then you would put it to vote with the referendum, but we would want to do it immediately thereafter, because the clock is still under that 120 days. So on Wednesday the 4th, you would then vote on the referendum, and then the next time that you would, because there's so many days in between, when you take that vote and the town clerk must be notified, we would notify her the very next day. You'll see on March 23rd, that would be the first eligible day for the referendum, and if you wanted to hold it on a Monday night, you could, but because we usually do votes on a Saturday, because this is similar to like an election, or it would be an election, then the first Saturday would be the 28th of March, so I would be recommending that that's how you.
Yeah, if we do it on the 23rd, now we're taking kids out of school for the day, spring, makes no sense.
And as we said earlier, you have until April 11th, so March 28th allows you that flexibility to do it within that period of time. So I just wanted to go through the discussion on dates, any questions at all about that?
No.
And then if not, we will communicate out, as Mike had stated, we'll communicate out to all of the department heads, we'll inform them as to what the plan is, and then assuming a favorable vote from the MSBA on December 12th, we'll be back here on December 17th.
With the intention of calling a special town meeting, the 31st, in the morning, 10 o'clock, whatever, I mean, if it's 11, because of whatever the school, whatever.
Okay, good. Next is, is that we will have the school building committee is going to have a public forum tomorrow night at 6:00 at the middle senior high school, and as part of that rollout, to start to really communicate, although there's already been public forums, but now there'll be the ability to be able to start to talk about money. So we can pull up the tax calculator. So Christine's been very, very helpful on this, and Scott Goldner as well. We have dialed into the tax collector that is available through the Division of Local Services, and we're going to play around with it in a moment, so you can see exactly how it works. Here are how the numbers shake out. The estimated project cost is $169 million. The official vote is to not exceed 169 million, so in theory, bids could come in under, except, let's just use 169 million dollars, the project cost. And then based on the reimbursement rate, the 54% is the number that's been used, however, not all of those costs are reimbursable. The net reimbursement rate right now that the consultant is assuming is around 43%. So Mike, to your point earlier, MSBA's going to take a vote presumably on 54, or maybe even 58%, because it'll be 54 potentially, along with some credits for, like, there's some green communities type stuff, LEDs, all that type of stuff. You'll get extra points for it. But not all the work that we're planning on doing, especially site work, is reimbursable. So according to the consultant, it looks like it'll end up being somewhere around a 43% net reimbursement rate. That yields $97 million in net borrowing costs. We have on this page, which was going to be made available on our website tomorrow, is that we're going to be able to put in specific property values, and that way everybody in town can look up what the actual impact is based on their current rate today. So on the homepage tomorrow, Christine will place a banner, it will say projected costs and information on the new school, it will be on the front page, you will click on that banner, it will bring you to a landing page with two links. One link that will go to the school building committee meeting, the school building committee page, so you can see the school, see the information, see what's been done over the past couple of years, and then it'll bring you to this link on the tax impact calculator. So right now, if you could do me a favor, if you could just punch in $500,000, actually type in 535, sorry. So $535,000 is not a random number, $535,000 is the average house value, not what you could sell it for, because if you go again on Zillow, or you go onto Realtor, you'll see that you could probably sell the house for a higher MO, but what your current assessed value is to the Board of Assessors. And $535,000, when you set the tax rate in November last year for FY '25, that was the average value of the house in West Bridgewater. So at $535,000, that means your impact will be $1,653 in the first year. And as you can see on the bottom, is that 7.13 million would be the bond payment that first year. It does change over time, because we accelerate principal, that actually comes down a little bit over time, but remember, over time, valuation will go up, the rate will go up, so we normally see the end result to be fairly static, but it does change on an annual basis. This year, if you had a business that was valued at $535,000, then your actual impact would be about $3,000, is what your tax impact increase would be. Now, we just used a random number, but we set this up so that way anybody in town can actually drill down onto their specific house, or if you know somebody in town that you really like, and you want to look up to see what that impact is going to be, you can do that as well. So if we scroll up just a little bit, you'll see where it says find your property value here, if you click on that link.
Okay.
Well, you already have it up, so go back one page, go back again, just so everybody could see it. So if you're watching at home, you'll see where it says find your property value, it's going to bring you to this page. This is our background information on the assessors, and it captures all taxable properties in the town of West Bridgewater.
Yep.
So we'll go up, the street name, since Jeff is chair, we'll just put on Copper Beach, because we know that's where he lives.
Watch this one, Mike.
And when you put in Copper Beach, all of Copper Beach populates, so you can look up anybody on that town, you'll scroll down, you'll come to where Jeff is, and you'll see 7, and to the right-hand side, his actual value is 738,900. So if we could go back, and we'll plug in 738,900 into the calculator.
30.
You'll see then, his taxable impact is about $2,300 in that first year. So we can now do that, if you were a business with a valuation of that much, you could see the increase would be 4,100. So everybody in town, whether you have a business, whether you have a resident or both, you can use this and go specifically to see what your actual impact would be. One caveat, this is based on FY '25 information. At your next meeting, you're going to set the tax rate for FY '26. Your valuations will differ, because everybody knows that your valuation probably increased this year over last year, all right, with very few exceptions. So I presume that that $535,000 average, or Jeff's specific 738,900, will probably be a little bit higher after next meeting, and you'll be voting on a different tax rate as well as part of that calculation. So that's why we placed in here, please revisit in mid-December. It probably won't take that long, but after you approve it, all of that information, Daniela then puts together a packet, sends it over to the State DOR, Department of Revenue, and they approve it, that could take 24 hours, that can take a couple of weeks. Once they approve it, then this information here will get updated to reflect FY '26 information. But I think this gives you a really good feel as to what that impact will be.
That's an impact, all right.
And so the idea is, is that as part of the public forum tomorrow, is that I've already been in touch with the chair, he will have this, I presume that he will roll it out as part of the public forum, so that way he can explain it as well, but obviously he'll be in charge of it, so, you know, it'll be there for him to use, however he chooses to use it.
Be able to get to it right from the front side, front page of the website.
A thousand percent.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Right, right, sure.
But that is the goal, it will be a banner, so everybody can click on the front page, and it'll bring it to here. Any questions at all about that?
How are we doing, Al?
I'm just figuring how we're going to build a school on that. That's not reimbursed, that, funds for that aren't going to be reimbursable.
Bring that up tomorrow, Mike.
All right.
And again, just so you're aware, that goes to the spirit of Mike's question, what you're bringing up. That's why there will be a higher percentage that will be approved, but not all of it is reimbursable, and that's why, to your point, there will be costs that are not reimbursed, and it will bring down that net grant from MSBA, and that's why we're using 97 on 169 million dollar total project. Any other questions?
No, thank you for putting that together, though, because I think that's going to be helpful, you know, all around for our residents.
Is the vote going to be taken the same way the MBTA vote was taken? Instead of people just yelling?
Well, I can't guarantee nobody will yell.
Oh, yeah, oh, they're going to yell.
But I presume that on a, because it is anticipated that it'll be a larger crowd, I think we will be prepared for a ballot vote, as we did with the MBTA, and I would feel strongly that that's the way it will end up.
I think that's the only fair way for both sides, the people that are far and against it.
I agree, I agree. I mean, ultimately, the moderator will control that, but I think that, I'm sure he will see it the same way. Last item on the agenda, it's just a FYI that again, we'll have the Veterans Day Parade held in West Bridgewater, Veterans Day Parade, held in West Bridgewater next Tuesday. So the parade starts at 10, but we usually come and get about 9:15, it's over on Hawthorne, off of, on North Main. It is supposed to be cold. Unfortunately, it also looks like it's the coldest day of the year, of the week, so, you know, just prepare for it. It'll end up here, I think Jeff is chair, you're speaking at the end.
Yep.
And so just an FYI on that. And then the next is, your next meeting's on November 19th, and that night you will be setting your tax rate, so the Board of Assessors will be here. I've been working with Daniela, she's doing a really nice job. It's a lot of work, and it's pulling in information from Patriot Properties, getting some preapprovals from Department of Revenue, and so they'll be making a presentation for your vote at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anything, Marcy?
No.
Mike?
Got nothing.
At this moment, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.